I will call to order our regularly scheduled city council meetings, Monday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty three at approximately seven P M. I'm three minutes late. All right, um, but the records reflect that all council members are present along with our city administrator, Mr. Duckin, our city attorney, Hughes, and various department heads. We certainly appreciate y'all being here, as well as our public. Thank you for being here. Um, it's, uh, usually when we have this big audience, we have students involved, but I don't see students, but I do see an agenda item. So, welcome. Appreciate you being here. Uh, before we get too far down the line, would Mr. Mattany like to provide a welcome for our upcoming Malden High School Mavericks fiftieth?
Absolutely, Mayor. Um, thank you. Um, as some of you may or may not know, this weekend is the fiftieth anniversary celebration of Malden High School, uh, in its current location. Um, as a member of the class of nineteen ninety-one, um, I, I plan on being there. Of course, I'm there for home football games anyway. Uh, but there are a number of events that the public is invited to, and if you are not planning on going, want to make sure that we go ahead and put this on your radar for this weekend. Uh, on Friday, uh, that is going to be an alumni tailgate from six to seven thirty, uh, free for all alumni in the bus loop beside the, beside the flagpole. Uh, snacks and drinks will be provided, and there will be decade tents so that you can visit with friends, bring your own chairs if you want to have a seat. Starting at seven thirty P M., we will, uh, kick off against Hillcrest, and, um, I won't get through the, uh, the hate for that. Um, I'll just leave it alone, and everybody knows what it is. Saturday morning, October twenty first, that, uh, is at nine A M. until noon, Malden High School will be open to all alumni, uh, and the public for self-guided tours. There's gonna be a breakfast provided by Waffle House for ten dollars, I believe, um, per person, and, um, you get to go around and see some of the things that have happened in the building to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary. Every high, every hallway has a time capsule bulletin board to share memories. Um, there is a Malden High T-shirt quilt raffle, five dollar entry, uh, and the winner will be announced, uh, at the live music event here at the Cultural Center, um, on Saturday evening. Charity car show, ten dollars per entry. Um, that would be down in the lower student lot near the stadium. From two to five on Saturday, Student Council is hosting a trunk-or-treat, uh, in the Malden High School student parking lot. That is free for the community, and there will be awards given for best dressed. This is for kids of all ages. And then Saturday night, from five to nine thirty, we have live music at the Cultural Center, also free to the public. Um, food trucks, drink trucks for individual purchase. Bring your chairs, sit, visit with old and new friends, uh, and you will hear the T-shirt quilt announcement. Um, the food trucks that will be there will be One Love Fusion Foods, Obey the Crave, uh, Hip Burger, uh, The Cluck Truck, Nard's Backyard Barbecue with drinks provided by Growler House. And, um, I believe that covers everything, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Anyone have any questions?
Go Matt.
Very nice. As always, go, go Matt. Got it. Thank you. Uh, we always begin our council sessions with our, uh, invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe Councilman Reynolds is the author.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If everybody would please bow with me. Uh, gracious Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to, uh, come out and serve. Uh, I pray that you'll help us to have discernment as we do the city's business. I pray that you'll give us compassion, uh, on contentious issues. We ask that you be with us, um, as we, as we make decisions based on, uh, that's information that we have, Father. Uh, we pray for those who are in need around us. We pray for those who are, uh, dealing with untold violence right now, Father, that your hand be with them, and we just pray that, uh, we've, we be a people who learn true compassion and grace and just, um, recognize that we need your hand in that. I pray that you be with our, uh, first responders within the city, both here and abroad, that you be with our police and fire. Uh, and I pray also, just as we all have families and, uh, we all just go through the daily grind of life, that you help us to, uh, always seek you, help us to always look for your grace and your compassion, and just, again, know your daily sufficient grace. Um, in all things, we pray and ask that your will be done. Amen. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. One of the privileges I do have as the mayor of the City of Malden is, uh, to, uh, read various proclamations, and this one is extremely timely. If you've heard the news lately, let me give this one to you. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by problems associated with illicit drug use, those that harm them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs through education and reduction in demand, as well as the hard work of organizations such as the Young Marines, the Marine Corps League, to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments know that citizens' support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Urike Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent, who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in nineteen eighty-eight to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. Now therefore, I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, South Carolina, to hereby proclaim October the twenty-first through thirty-first, I'm sorry, twenty-third through thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Malden, and urge the citizens of Malden to join me in this observation and witness whereof I have here unto, set my hand, this sixteenth day of October twenty twenty-three. Next item on our agenda, I believe, is our Cultural Center mural presentation. Is that J R. or Mr. Don? Yeah, J R. I J R.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I will be here today. I have with me our co-president of Leadership Golden Strip, Brittany Hilbert, and she is here to present and showcase a little bit of what the class is doing. I acting as a city staff member trying to liaise this, but also I'm a member of Leadership Golden Strip for this class, so I'll be helping her as she makes her presentation.
Thank you. How are you guys doing tonight? Um, I think you all have a copy or have a digital copy, but if not, we brought physical copies for anyone who would like one.
I don't believe we have them.
So for those who aren't aware, Leadership Golden Strip is a program with the Chambers of Commerce and the Golden Strip, so Simpsonville, Fountain Inn, and Malden. Um, each year, a group of leaders come together to learn about their communities and do a service project, and it was really important to our class to have a service project that was, we were able to impact each of the communities. So we have, um, chosen to do public art. So we are going to install a series of three murals, uh, one in each community. So, uh, in Fountain Inn, it'll be going on the Burdette Building. In Simpsonville, it will be going on the Art Center. And then here in Malden, um, we're hoping to put it on the Cultural Center. And I know Art House has been here before. We've contracted with Art House. They're a local, uh, design consultation firm. They've done several other public murals. Uh, they've done several downtown in Greenville. They did Camperdown. They did the one over by Ice on Main. But we're working with them. They have, uh, helped us select this artist. So for Malden, you guys have a very large space, and one of the squares is actually what we will be doing, uh, and I think you guys have met with them to discuss doing the whole array. Uh, but the one that we are hoping for you, to get your approval on and for you guys to discuss is the one that has the South Carolina logo that says Malden, um, and with the Duke's Mayonnaise. So there's a few things in each city's mural that will connect them. So if you're unaware, the Golden Strip was named because of the yellow water lines that ran through all three communities. So all three murals will feature a water element as a nod to the naming of the communities. Um, all three communities also have the train going through. The trains were actually able to stop in the communities because of the water lines. They were steam-powered, so the water lines helped them to have, get refilled. So each mural will also have a train component in it. Um, while each have those similar components, all three will be unique for the communities. So, um, these came from ideas that you all gave to Art House, that they gave to the artist. The concept is a little bit like, um, a sticker collection for your cooler. So, um, it's just all of the different things that you would want to collect here in the City of Malden. So for ours, you know, Duke Mayonnaise is infamous. Um, we're working on finding out if we can use that image or if there's a licensing, um, requirement behind that. Um, but there's also the fireworks. There's musical instruments as a nod to your jazz festivals and the other musical events you host downtown. Um, the, the South Carolina with the Malden logo, kind of your on-the-map here, and the other murals also are incorporating those. However, those, um, are part of your long-term plan. They just wanted to give you a visual representation of what the whole thing could look like when completely put together. But, um, we would love your feedback and, um, hopefully your approval to move forward with our project.
Any questions, Brittany?
Question. I, I really liked this mural.
Good, thank you.
Um, where would the train fit in on that one? You know?
I think the train, I don't have my copy in front of me. It is, so we might move some of them around. That was, so the train right now is on the, if you're, if you're, yeah, it's on that second panel. Um, it could be moved to the first panel where the Duke's Mayonnaise is, if we're unable to get licensing. Um, but they wanted to give you kind of the idea of the whole thing.
Are you seeking feedback or are you seeking approval, or both?
Uh, yes, and.
It is actually on, as a point of order, it actually is under proclamation and presentation. It's not an action item for us.
So I think just feedback at this time.
Perfect.
It was our first draft of this one.
Got it. So we're principally looking at the one that has Malden in the state of South Carolina.
Correct.
Correct. There, there are obviously elements in all of these that are, that are great. Um, my quick initial feedback would be the Malden built in eighteen eighty-six. That probably could be removed because we already have Malden within the state. And, uh, looking at some of the other things that you have here that are really, uh, makes us different. Obviously, you mentioned the train moving it over is a, is a possibility, but the, which I never thought about when we had this conversation, but the Miracle League, I think that would be an important one to move over that I'd never really thought about, but that makes us unique, uh, compared to a lot of other communities. Um, and I do like the, the little fingers over there making the Malden. I don't know if everyone would get it, but it's interesting. So that's, that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Mr. Matt.
I, I, I'm glad that we went ahead and recognized that this is part of the proclamations and presentations, because I think with us getting first glance at it tonight, um, it's definitely going to need some more discussion, uh, by council. You know, there are some elements that, that I would be concerned with. Um, you know, number one, and Mr. Allgood noted, possibly removing the logo just because it would potentially be duplicative with Malden already being a part of the state. But for me, it's more about a logo that nobody has ever really cared for, and if at some point in the near future we work on a rebranding of the city and have a new logo that goes along with it, then that would become outdated very quickly. Um, the other piece, uh, in opposition to Mr. Allgood, I understand, you know, the, the, the finger's pointing to make the M, but I think that we could be looking at, um, you know, at, at something else, uh, in, in that particular picture, you know, with our, our, our high school being the Mavericks, uh, and there are a number of hand signals that would indicate horns down, um, that, that would be, uh, offending the high school pretty quickly. So I, I think we would, there's some elements there that we would likely need to talk through, um, just to nuance for a third-party group that doesn't necessarily understand who we are as a city and how, uh, that interplay might affect the people who see the work.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. This is Spurs.
Yeah, that's the spur, not the horns. The only gamecock. So, well, Mike said. So, yeah, just to, um, kind of further what Tap was saying, and, and I, I agree with, with all of that, that it might perhaps be us looking at the two larger pieces and maybe removing one from, a couple of items from the original, and there, there's things in the second one that I think probably belong in the first go-around. So, um, yeah, and I apologize. This is the first time that I think any of us have seen this, so.
We just got.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I didn't want you to think that we had had time to look at it and what it's called. Kinda, yes, during the headlights. So, yeah, but overall, I think it's fantastic.
Good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll submit your feedback and anything else. I know, um, J, I know J R. very well, so, uh, J R. can also compile feedback, and we can submit it to the artist. Um, and he's really good about making updates. Um, we did several from Simpsonville as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Great, Council.
Next item on our agenda is Stormwater Utility Fee Presentation, I believe.
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Matt Kelly from K C I. to present that for us tonight, and I believe David's handling the microphone. I'll get that queued up right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Matt Kelly. I'm a stormwater engineer with K C I Technologies, and we would like to share some information that, uh, we were asked to help, uh, the city come up with some, some ideas of how to fund stormwater. Some of the background information we have is that the, uh, community is about twenty-seven thousand five hundred folks. The, uh, some of the concerns facing the city is to, the, the rising cost of construction and the, the lack of adequate infrastructure with inside the, the city, and then the rising concerns of flooding due to the numbers of folks coming into the city. Can catch up with us here? Thank you. Sorry about that. Little, little rough start there. Um, one of the things within the last two years that the city has seen about a nine percent, uh, growth in population, and, uh, we'll step on up to the next slide here. And, uh, we're looking at other communities have a, a fee that's already associated with it. We, we looked at City of Rock Hill, uh, Anderson, and, uh, North Augusta. Those have similar populations. The, the current fee that Greenville County charges all residents within the City of Malden is between twenty-two eighty and twenty-five sixty-five a year. Those are, um, calculated with a formula that Greenville County uses. That generates about seven hundred and seven thousand. Generates about seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. None of that goes to the city. Uh, all those funds are to run the county's stormwater program. The, these are the communities that, uh, we started looking at, all having similar populations. The only city with inside Greenville County that currently has a stormwater utility fee is Greenville County. They're set up a little bit differently. They did not, uh, join the, the other municipalities in the county when the stormwater fees and stormwater programs started. Okay. Uh, again, their population is a, is a good bit higher, three times as high as the, the other communities that we look. To, to get us all started, we looked at the populations. We looked at the areas, we, uh, the areas of the cities, and then we also looked at the fees that were being collected for those communities. These two charts summarize that information. Won't go into too much detail, but you can see how, how each one of the communities compare with the other ones, the, the areas of the city, and then also with the. One of the things we did to look at creating this fee is there's about four different criterias to look at. Uh, you could look at, uh, credits. You know, if you do certain stormwater activities, you can get a credit for that. Uh, we looked at, is there a minimum charge that we should look at? Uh, all charges, all fees, all charges, um, associated with the improvements, and then we looked at equivalent residential units. Equivalent residential unit is a way of proportioning what a, a family, single-family residential house contributes in means of stormwater, and then proportioning that to different commercial uses. It's a way of ratioing that out so that two, everybody's kind of put on the same playing field. Another thing to look at was a flat fee or to vary the fee depending on various components. A lot of this is, this is kind of technical, so I want to try to skip on over to some, some more of the, the data that we can look at. Uh, there's five different alternatives that we looked at that typical communities calculate these fees based on. Again, it, it revolves or evolves down to the four different criteria, and whether or not you decide to use credits, looking at the minimum charges, or how you adjust with a, a flat fee or a variable fee. These fees are broken down a little bit further with a, a different fee for a thousand-square-foot lot or above a thousand-square-foot lot. So there's different fees based on how large the property is that it's being looked at, and then whether it's vacant or unoccupied, new structures, or has structures in impervious areas on those properties. The next thing we looked at was what, uh, all these fees are keep, uh, calculate out to be using the different alternatives that we have up here, the different, uh, fee bases. And we, we looked at alternative two was kind of what we focused on, and that was going to generate about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for additional fees. And as a comparison, we looked at what, of course, what the existing county fee is. That's seven hundred and seven thousand annually that it's produced from the residents. If we looked at our alternative two, which is kind of what we felt like was a, a good middle ground for what other communities were doing and what would be feasible for the City of Malden to do. And then we looked at a couple of different scenarios of, uh, going up to a thirty-dollar fee, thirty-five-dollar fee, um, up to, all the way up to a seventy-two-dollar fee. That would give us a, a two ma, two-million-dollar annual collection of these. Next thing would be, what do we look at when, how does that compare with the other communities? We've got this bar chart kind, kind of showing what's going on here. Uh, the top of the purple there, that's the two million dollars. That would be a, a seventy-two-dollar total fee. That's the twenty-five sixty-five. That is Greenville County's that they take off. And, uh, it kind of shows you what, what you would have to charge to get a two-million-dollar fee. And what, what we looked at again was the seven hundred and twenty-five thousand annual fee. You can see on the graph there how that kind of hits in the middle of the, the Fort Hill and, and North Augusta's current fees as far as the kind of a market comparison. Next step would be, well, what do we do with the money? What do we do with the fees? Just to give you an idea, we looked at three different options. Uh, you could bid all the work out to do your stormwater improvements. Do on-call stormwater repairs. Uh, you would have no in-house capabilities to do any of the work. Option two would be to develop a crew and have that crew and have equipment. Worked on and projects that would be worked on. Option three was a hybrid of this approach, which would include a s, a small staff and equipment trucks to be able to do the work. Uh, we looked at an annualized cost of the equipment, the cost of the staff, and the, the fuel and maintenance cost for a four-person crew. That accounted or accumulated up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And then with, with the annual revenue of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, again, this is just what we felt like was a good approach to look at so that we could give information so you guys could consider it. Broke that down into five hundred and fifty thousand in-house construct, construction, and then that would allow you about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to bid contract work out. Got, got that information summarized. Got got that information summarized again below there. I'll look at the four-man crew. We already talked about how we generated that number of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then in order to get some kind of number, we just looked at a a number of fees that would be reasonable to do in a week. And then for thirteen weeks, how long it would take to put in eighteen-inch storm drain pipe, and also the same amount. Those are typical storm drain pipes. Again, that's not saying that you have to put in in that much, just to to give you an idea of what amount of material cost that would be. And then estimated destruction, miscellaneous materials like stone and whatnot. There's another approximately eighty thousand dollars. That would give you the materials that would for that crew to perform about twenty-six weeks worth of work. And then we looked at another twenty-six weeks that could be doing repairs and maintenance and responding to emergencies. That was how the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars was accounted for. And then to to break it down further to show you what could happen with the a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. The first project that you could do based on the budget, Noelwood Drive, in a previous study that KCI had done, was calculated between a hundred and seventy-five, two hundred thousand dollars. So in your first year, you could bid out Noelwood Drive. In the fourth year, you would have accumulated enough money that you can pay for the project for Holly Springs. And then in year eleven, that would allow you to have enough money to bid out the Bishop Heights project. Again, these are just for illustrations to kind of show you how long it would take to accumulate the funds to be able to do these projects. And and these projects haven't even been decided on. I just had budget numbers for these projects, just to give you an idea where this would all fall out and how the money would shake out depending on what the what the fees that were collected. And this is kind of our recommendation and conclusions based on just reasonable idea and estimations of what seems like it would be a fair amount to spend on in-house staff, a fair amount to spend on projects. The the fee for a residential property that was undeveloped would be a fee of twenty-five dollars. For residential properties greater than a thousand square feet, it would be a twenty-eight-dollar fee. And then the non-residential developed properties would be twenty-seven dollars per equivalent residential. And that is that prorated amount that compares the commercial development to the same amount of development of a single residential property. Then non-residential undeveloped properties would be a fee of twenty-five dollars per year. To summarize, that's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars used to do in-house labor and purchase materials for that crew to do the work and then contract out for a hundred and seventy-five. That's that's conclusion of the report. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is really for Mr. Duncan, I think. So we we charge, we currently charge the stormwater fees for Greenville County. Aside from being attached to their permit, what else does that get us?
So there is actually a list of of services that they provide. I don't have that committed to memory, but from a capital standpoint, nothing. However, we currently budget through our standard budgetary practices for right-of-way maintenance throughout the city, but we don't have a dedicated fund stream for stormwater and get nothing from the county for capital improvement. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My only question, I think I saw an answer there. We would continue paying the county stormwater fee, which we get nothing.
Yes, sir. So under all scenarios, the county imposed stormwater fee would remain the same. This would be an optional fee that Malden could initiate on Malden properties for the purpose of public improvements in Malden.
Would be the potential of us doing the work that Greenville County does and not having that fee passed on to them.
That's that's really a larger discussion simply because it would be standing up an entire MS four division for the city, which if if we just took that fee in lieu, we would not be a small MS four. We would be at the same size we are now. So Mr. Flamen, do you want to add anything to this? I know you're probably, yours are burning back there, but we we don't really have an advantage of going out on our own, other than all of that responsibility now falls to us, which is a kind of a shared responsibility with Greenville County.
Yes, I guess my question would be is the services they provide. If we were to farm that out, would it be less money than seven hundred?
I don't have an answer for that kind of, yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I we I'd have to look into that, sir.
Mayor. Mr. Redd. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this would, again, for the crowd certification, this would be something that we put through a couple of months ago. Charged KCI through a stormwater initiative with the city. So this is for presentation. I think I would suggest kick it back to committee, Mr. Craylane's committee, and let's talk some more there. But I think the longer we talk up here, the more times you'll hear how frustrating it is for the county to collect fees on our behalf and us getting nothing for it. So I think we'll hear that seven more times. But I think the best course next would be send it back to committee and let Mr. Craylane and his committee chew on this for a little bit.
Mr. Craylane said he would welcome the opportunity to get back to his committees. I'm sure Mr. Duncan will get it done your agenda quite regularly.
Yes, sir. That was the next stop for this.
Good. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate KCI and your work on this. This is something that the city has talked about for several years now and is an important initiative and certainly trying to recognize the issue of, as we look at development throughout the city, old and new, and how the city is to best serve our citizens, again, old and new subdivisions. So thank you for your work on this.
One one thing I just want to make clear here, since we have a friend from Bishop Heights over here. Just because it says year eleven, year eleven Bishop Heights, this is for reference only. This isn't any planning whatsoever, so. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
Eleven years from now, that logic would weigh more than two million bucks.
Anything else on that?
No, sir. Other than we intend to begin discussions and deliberations on that report in the Public Works Committee beginning next month.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next item before us is our city council meetings, minutes of September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. That has been in your packet for y'all to review. Are there any noted corrections, adjustments, clarifications need to be made? All right, unless there's an objection, we will unanimous consent approval of the minutes as submitted. Any objection? Hearing none of the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next item. Any of you have been waiting on is our public comment session. This, our rules of this council meeting are have public comment broken into two sections. The first public comment section is for anything on the agenda tonight. And we asked everyone to sign up with their name and their address and the item they would like to speak on. And it's unanimous, they're all on the agenda item. So let me give you just some background information. And the the beauty of this city is we don't have to worry about incivility. And the reason I say that is we're a member of the Miss Association, and one of the things we have done is compile a statement of civility, respect, and solutions. And it's gone nationwide. And just for your information, one of the these councils up here have taken, "I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding finding solutions for the betterment of my city or town." As I said, we don't usually worry about that in City of Malden because we get along. We're a good community. It don't mean we agree with each other all the time, but everyone, we respect everyone's opinion. With that being said, those of you tonight wishing to address the council, you spilled out the speaker's log. Gone on that. You will, we already went on that. Based on the agenda we have tonight and the number of people that have signed up to speak, we will ask you to limit your presentations to three minutes per person. Not to exceed thirty minutes for all comments. We're okay there. Those persons not on agenda will speak later. Presentation proper decorum must be observed by members of council, by speakers, and by the audience. The mayor shall keep control of the meeting and require the speakers and the audience to refrain from abusive and profane remarks, disruptive outbursts, applause, protest, or other conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly conduct of the business of the meeting. Personal attacks on council members, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. It is inappropriate to use a public hearing or the public comment period for the purpose of making political speeches, including threats of political action. Engaging in such conduct and failing to cease with such conduct on the request of the mayor will be grounds for ending the speaker's time at the podium or for removal of any disruptive person from the meeting at the direction of the mayor. All that being said, we want you to have your say, address your comments to the chair, myself. It is your chance to voice your comment. It is not an argument. It is not a response expected back from any member up here unless there's someone needs clarification, which we'll recognize them for that clarification. If the speaker before you said everything you wanted to speak on, that's fine. Stand up, say your name, your address, and then you could look and say ditto for what he said, and we'll just move right along to the next person, okay? But if you need to add something, do that, because this is your chance for that. With that being said, first item, first person on the sign-up is Mr. Richard Harden. He'll come to the microphone. I think we have to use the handheld, David. Mr. Dearhoff will take care of that for us. Just state your name and address. And one thing I did didn't say is the City of Malden is made up of five different cities. Greenville, Simpsonville, Malden. So if you would also, just for the record, state if you're a citizen of the City of Malden, that way we'll know you're in or out. But you're still welcome for your comments.
All right. My name is Richard Harden. I live at one forty-five Silver Hill Lane. That's in Greenville, South Carolina, two nine six oh seven. So I'm not in the City of Malden. I buy it. I wanted to take my time this evening to oppose a very poorly planned, high-density proposed development at six thirty-five to six eighty-nine Log Shoals Road. The developer seeks to annex to the City of Malden in R ten classification. I'm not naive to the fact that the land is going to get developed over time, but we need to be very smart about the way that we develop it. I saw their original proposal and the newest proposal that is going around here tonight. And while the proposal, the new proposal is a little bit better, I believe the original reflects their true intentions with both to neglect many and both neglect to keep many existing mature trees that are currently on that land. The lot is filled with a lot of those, like I said, which provide habitats for many deer and other animals. And the newest proposal proposes a twenty-foot landscape buffer, but doesn't mention leaving any of those trees. They'll probably plant a lot of brand-new trees, is what I would imagine. The tract of land is not big enough to support R ten density, in my opinion. Stormwater from those lots, I believe, will drain into the lots that are right underneath it, which is where I live. And I'm concerned about that, the flooding going down the side of my house when that tract is is developed with a lot of dense housing. The proposal includes connecting a road to the adjacent Greenbrier Meadows community, which will increase cut-through traffic and endanger children that play throughout the community. And people already cut through the Planters Road community directly across from us to get from Ashmore Bridge Road to Pruitt Road and then to Log Shoals. So we'll just be an extension of that, which I I don't like the idea of. I applaud Stanley Martin for the development of Greenbrier Meadows. I believe it was developed very smart. The tracts of land are very large. You don't get a lot of those these days. The sensible lot sizes and smart spacing. But the proposal at Log Shoals Road is a slap in the face to those of us who was marketed more of a secluded wooded area with a large tree buffer. That's all I got to think.
Right, Mr. Harden. Next, Mr. Daniel Fowler.
Hello, my name is Daniel Fowler. I'm at one forty-one Silver Hill and for the Long Shoals Development, this and that. Like you kind of mentioned, I've actually come from a background in real estate and have a degree in real estate as well. I've been a commercial residential appraiser for over twenty-five years now. And we actually purchased there in Greenville and or in that Greenbrier Development through strategic and also with our heart because we wanted to make that our forever home. And Stanley Martin actually, like, the way we were like marketed the property was like, even on their website, it says tree-lined community or wooded wooded community. And there's a lot of loose marketing that turns out that we were subjected to that that like, for example, there's stuff going around, like our lot goes ten feet into the trees. And so where this pulls full circle is my wife and I, we worked really hard to find a place that we can call our forever home that that has that wooded feel to it. But drafting off of more of my experience, I really came as a surprise that that the annexation was a proposal and to upzone it to R ten, which would essentially give higher density far beyond what I expected from the urban planning, because I've taken a lot of like urban planning and commercial-related courses in my career. And and for example, it's like just the people walking along the streets. Like, there's very little sidewalks. The the streets are narrow, and the positioning of that, the development is like pretty far from like walkability in terms of like just community members going to the store and things like that and just playing. I mean, I see kids in busy streets already as it is, and that's that it is what it is in that terms. But in terms of like, I like the first proposal for the highest example would be the one hundred and one condominiums that just really shows the lack of consideration for a community point of view of where this is actually going. And so, you know, it's just really comes as a surprise that that's something that can really even be approved from a real, true community member point of view. Even after COVID, like I went around and spoke to some people. There's people that are like, and my heart goes out to homeless and lower income and people really trying to work to to have something. And sometimes, you know, lower income is synonymous with not having cars and and walkability and things like that to really have a meaningful life with lower income. So I, there was this recent news article that came out about Greenville or the developers in Greenville taking advantage of like lower-income housing. And by all means, I I really, my heart goes out to homeless, low income, and the whole gradient scale. But in this particular situation, I think it's more of a ploy to actually get higher revenue and actually make bigger profits, not from the seller, the developer, the builder. And and, you know, the city, we always need taxation and and all the the taxes and fees that come along with that for our city growth. But I just don't think this is the way to do it. I think more planning needs to be considered. And as our, you know, representative, I hope you give give good consideration into what decisions you guys have control of. Thank you.
Sir. Sure, I'll, I butcher your name. I'm sorry. I'm southern, so. Doesn't speak. Is it Lori Long? Leanna Long. Okay, thank you. I apologize for that.
Everyone, my name is Leanna Long, and, uh, I live at one forty-one Silver Hill Lane, so right behind the most development. And, um, my biggest concern, you know, along with the urban planning that's been mentioned, is, um, excuse me, definitely the very minimal, what is now being called landscape buffer. Um, we have very beautiful, tall, you know, mature trees behind us. And as mentioned, we were sold a wooded development. Um, and, you know, twenty feet, whether, I mean, I, likely they wouldn't even leave those mature trees, but twenty feet, even if they did, it's, it's, it's very sparse through there. So it really would The other really concerning thing is the traffic mentioned. That would, um, create, you know, more traffic coming through our development and the Planters Orchard Development that's near us as well, too, as mentioned. Um, excuse me. So, um, just as an overall, you know, um, growth in terms of planning, this really seems like a bad decision. Um, you know, if, if Stanley Martin were to revise it and potentially extend our development and make half-acre lots, um, I think that that would be another choice.
Thank you.
Sandra Bone. I live at seven oh one But I don't have the knowledge of speakers that have spoke before. All I can say is I don't think townhomes and the smaller, single-family lots are suitable. They don't seem to fit to me for the rural area that we The trees behind me Some would say, again, I understand growth, but I don't
Thank you. Kristi Drake? Chrissy?
Good evening. Chrissy Drake, um, with Blue Water Civil Design at seven eighteen Lounes Hill Road in Greenville, South Carolina. Um, I am also available to answer any questions once you guys get to this actual agenda item. If there's anything I don't address currently, right now, I am here in support of the development. Um, so I want to go ahead and address a couple of the comments that have been made tonight. Specifically, um, at our last meeting, uh, there were some statements about the density and having the hundred and one townhomes. And so we went back to the drawing board with the builder and the developer and decided to come up with this mixed-use development that met a lot of the needs. Um, there were two property owners near us that came out in opposition, asking for no lots to be abutting their homes and for a larger buffer, which we have since accommodated for. Um, in regards to the sizing of the lots, these, these lots are actually identical with the lots that are that are actually under development across the street at Austin Chase. They're the exact same square footage. Um, there is that townhome section. Stanley Martin is the, the, the builder on this, who is also part of Greenbrier. And they are viewing this as a phase two to their Greenbrier subdivision. Um, I know traffic's been mentioned as one of the concerns. Greenville County did provide that connection road as an intention for interconnectivity that can help with traffic so that you don't have every single one of these lots having to go through one access point. You now have multiple access points to different roads. Um, there was mention of concern for sidewalks and safety. And I'm sure David will address this more. Um, all of that gets shown on our preliminary plots. Since this is just a preliminary site plan, we are required to provide sidewalks. Um, it is public right-of-way along the single-family detached section. Um, we do provide a lot of community areas, like a dog park or an open pavilion, a fire pit area, that we are trying to promote that community feel. Um, with respect to trees and density, we are required to do a tree survey for the City of Malden. And for X amount of trees that get removed, we have to replace according to the size of those trees and the, um, quantity. And we do have some areas where that landscape buffer would be undisturbed. Um, I would also like to note that in the Greenville County side, so the Greenbrier subdivision, Greenville County requires a minimum twenty-foot undisturbed buffer that cannot be touched. So all during development, all those trees that are in their backyards are actually in their backyards for at least twenty feet worth. Um, one thing I do want to mention is that Stanley Martin has done a lot of market research in the area and has found that there, that these townhomes would provide attainable housing with the price point that they're at. There's a couple other townhome developments near this area, specifically Baldwin Chase and Neely Villa, Village, that are for rent townhomes. So this is now providing a for-sale opportunity that it hasn't been brought to this market, this area.
Thank you, Ms. Drake.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Mara McCram. I live in six nine three Log Shoals Road. Um, the second option that developer sent it to us, it is, I'm, I'm in favor because there's no houses behind my backyard. And also, um, the first one, I've seen that there is a townhome behind me, and now they did remove that, which is, I'm glad that there's no more house behind me. But, um, the only concern that I will have is just the, um, the flooded, because when it rains, it goes all the way to that, um, the, the, right beside me, and then there's no, there's no going out. I mean, it's always flooded over there in that, uh, at, at the road when it rains. But, um, the changes, we are, I'm happy with it. My husband and I is happy with it. So I'm in favor with it. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis Cartier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you. Thank you for your service to the community as well. I agree with everything I oppose. Sorry. My name's Dennis Cartier, one five three Silver Hill Lane, Greenville, two nine six oh seven. Um, I'm in agreement with the folks that oppose this as well. I, I, I'm not going to belabor the points that they have already made. I do want to bring up the fact that I'm all for development. I think it needs to be sustained such that building all these huge communities, I'm, I'm not going to be selfish. I don't have any young kids, but what's the impact going to be to the schools, the roads, and our infrastructure here, here in Malden? So I just wanted to make that point. So, but again, thank you for your time.
Sir. On that sheet. Next item on the agenda is a report from our city administrators.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just have, uh, four items tonight, so making it kind of short. Only a single page versus multi-page. Anyway. So, uh, just wanted to let everyone know that the city was notified recently by the Municipal Association that we've been awarded a Hometown Economic Development Grant. This grant was written to create a new master plan for the City Center project. As you may recall, the city council approved a resolution to support the grant back in August with a match of three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. The grant award is the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and will be used to hire a consultant to aid the city in the creation of a new master plan for City Center. The grant will be managed by the Community Development Department. I just want to say congratulations to the staff. I'm putting together a great package, uh, and winning this grant, and we look forward to the work ahead. Uh, just an update on our audit. So Scott and Company are continuing the audit this week and hope to finalize the report in the coming weeks. Once completed, we hope to have the auditors before Council in November to deliver the results of this year's audit. The audit will consist of the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of and for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, has awarded a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the city for the twenty-one consecutive years, a win streak that we expect to continue. Uh, fall is here. I think we've all noticed the cooler weather, and that leaves are beginning to fall. Public Works crews have already started leaf collection activities for this leaf season. A full schedule of leaf pickup has been posted to the city's website, and we began with, we began with Zone One. Each week crews will rotate to different parts of the city until April twenty twenty-four. Uh, you can go to City of Malden's website, cityofmalden.org/departments-publicworks, uh, to get that full schedule. And lastly, tonight, you may start seeing campaign signs adorning roadways and yards throughout the city. City of Malden General Election is only weeks away and will be held on Tuesday, November seventh. Polls will be open from seven AM until seven PM. Voters will cast for ballots for four council seats, including the mayor, and then seats two, four, and six. To verify your polling location, review your sample ballot, please visit scvotes.gov. And for information regarding early voting or absentee voting, please visit greenvillecounty.org/voterregistration. My report.
Duncan, uh, one question on the leaf pickup.
Yes, sir.
Are they still being vacuumed up from the yard or do we push them into the street?
Uh, so we asked that everyone put them on the curb next to and not in the street to prevent any type, type of road issues and driving issues and, and the like. So just on the curb, um, for some communities, they have a planting strip, is what we call it, between the sidewalk and the curb. So that's the great area for it, or it's just close to the curb as possible for, for vacuuming.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, reports from standing committees. Our first, uh, finance and policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only item I had was the twenty-first consecutive year of the GFOA award, and Mr. Duncan stole that thunder. So for the first time in ever, in forever, I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public safety. Ms. King.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple of quick things. Um, I wanted to give a shout out to our fire department, who was responsible for putting out a pretty large brush fire at the beginning of the month, um, at a construction site. Um, I've heard feedback from the community, and I know our, um, chief was in contact with our residents to give them up-to-date, um, feedback on what was going on and, and to assure them that the fire was under control. So thank you, and please thank, um, the shift for their work, because I think it was started at night and went through the night until the next day, late into that afternoon. Um, so as a shout-out to the fire department, I'll shout-out to the police department for National Night Out. I think it was the largest attended, and, um, I'm not so sure we can still have it on the Cultural Center grounds if Madden continues to bring in all of the folks that, and, I'm joking with that. It was fantastic. So, um, I thanked all those guys, thanks to the fire department, Public Works. Um, it took the whole team of the, uh, of the city to make that happen. It was a fantastic event. Um, one last thing with the police department, um, Captain Clardy is, um, new to Malden. He was sworn in the first or second of October, so he's our captain over patrol. He's from Malden, so we welcome him back to our city, um, to serve as captain with the police department. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. King. Worse, Mr. Crayley.
Um, I was going to report on the leaves, but, uh, Mr. Duncan beat me to it. So on that, uh, yeah, he stole, stole my fire. So I have nothing else to report. Thank you.
Crayley, economic planning and development. Mr. Matt.
We're good, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Building codes. Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to report that Business and Development Services is breaking records. City's growing.
Recreation, Mr. Algood.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, thank you to, um, our, our police for coming out to many of our recreational games to make sure everything is safe and sound at all our parks as we wind down to the, the softball and baseball season, um, as well as football. Uh, meanwhile, we have registration going on for basketball. I believe that ends on October thirty-first. So if you have kids, sign them up.
Algood. Item on agenda, unfinished businesses ordinance, second reading, there are none. New business ordinance, first reading, Mrs. Miller.
First item is discussion and possible action on annexation and zoning assignment for fourteen point three acres at six thirty-five to six eighty-nine Log Shoals Road.
Ms. Miller, this is coming out of Business Development Service. Ms. Kuzner, I believe it came out of your committee for discussion. So we will first recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to open this item for discussion.
Would you like anyone to present the revision?
Or, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Are you looking for me to give, uh, just an overview of what you're reviewing tonight?
I believe so. I believe that particular committee, uh, was, uh, had a, a good little discussion between the two of them, but I believe the rest of us would like, would like to hear more about the project and where it came and, uh, where it's located and what feeds it. And, uh, I think the changes we've seen.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I won't go into the extent of the report that I gave at the committee meeting, but, uh, as you probably picked up on here tonight, there has been a revision to the conceptual plan of the applicant wishes to develop this site. Previously, they were proposing to develop this tract for approximately a hundred and one townhomes. The applicant since revised their proposal. It's shown here on the television monitors. That includes a mix of thirty-one detached, single-family homes and two townhomes. Seventy-three homes. And then I updated the report that's in your packets to reflect this new design. Um, just, uh, to see if there's anything else I really need to highlight here, just to kind of give you an overview of the request again. They're requesting this, these tracks be annexed into the City of Malden and be as- assigned a zoning of R-ten, which is a medium-density residential district. Uh, STYO intend, development intends to develop these tracks, as I just outlined, for the seventy-three homes. Stanley Martin will be the reportedly be the builder for these, for these homes. Um, price points, you're looking at the townhomes will start in the two hundreds, and the, uh, detached homes will, uh, be higher than that. That's a very brief overview of the project. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer. And as you heard, we have, uh, representatives for the applicant here tonight, including their project engineer as well as, uh, the developer.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and, and Madam Chair, again, apologies for not being able to attend committee. Um, they job got in the way. Um, Mr. Deerhog, a, a couple of things. If this property is not annexed into the city and stays in the county at its current zoning classification of residential suburban, what would be allowed to go, uh, on that property compared to the plan that has been presented?
So the RS in the county is a low-density residential district, probably comparable to our R-twenty. So the density, as far as what they're showing in their cons- concept for right now, probably wouldn't be allowed under that RS. They would, and I expect they would be looking at approaching the county for a petition to rezone the property for their project.
So you think it'd be, what, two-thirds of what this looks like? Half of what this looks like?
I'm not very fluent in all the standards for the county zoning districts, especially the RS, since we don't have necessarily the same category here. But my assumption is you'd probably be looking at something somewhat comparable to the Greenbrier Meadows. category here, but my assumption is you'd probably be looking at something somewhat comparable to the Greenbrier Meadows. That's next to it, but certainly civil engineer here has got a lot more experience I, than I have dealing with the county zoning. So if you want a little more information on this question, we can refer.
Sure. I reviewed the county. It look, it appeared to be about a third of what they're proposing as far as homes, 25 to 30.
The, the other piece I had a question with David, um, it's, it, when we're talking about um, capacity of public infrastructure and services. Um, it is not known if Metro connects or approve the sewer design and capacity for this project. How, what's, what is our degree of certainty on Metro allowing for that capacity or providing that capacity? Um, because I, I'll, I'll be frank and I mean, I appreciate the, the, the folks from Log Shoals who are outside of the city limits, but coming and making uh, making their point. For me, it's more about what we have to do with the city and making sure that everybody holds up, you know, their end of the bargain. And every time, you know, I'll, I, I drive by um, 711 North Main where we were told that there was going to be a significant buffer in the back. Uh, and all of those trees got knocked down and now there's no buffer. Um, I'm, I'm a little bothered by the bait and switch that we've had happen with a number of developments. So, you know, I would be very hesitant in, in supporting this right now. Um, especially in light of the fact, not even knowing if there's going to be sewer capacity there. Um, what is our degree of certainty or degree of confidence that Metro would approve that?
If they didn't have a lift station involved, I wouldn't have any concern about that. I know that Metro would serve that in a heartbeat. It's the element of the lift station that I, I just, is a mystery to me. Only because we've seen other projects struggle getting approval from Metro for their lift station. So that's, that's the only part of it that's, I, I don't have great confidence in, but if it weren't for that, I have no doubt that Metro would serve this and has the capacity to do so in our.
That's all I have for now, Mayor.
Mr. Matt.
Mr. Crayling. Um, I have some concerns on this that, that again, going back to the sewage. Until that's resolved, I, I really wouldn't even want to touch this, to be honest. Um, but also looking at this, this is, we still have an issue with the traffic with the roads. I know that uh, that's not our roads, but it's still going to impact quality of life of the folks that uh, live in Malden, right? Especially in this area. Well, right now, I mean, it's, you're still putting 73 homes in, or you know, another townhomes and mixes 73 and 14 acres. That's still pretty damn crowded, especially with all the number of people that live in this area now. It's just, it's just an awful lot of burden. I'm also concerned that the services that we would be, are to put in here, I don't know if, you know, uh, the juice is worth the squeeze. I'm afraid this, this community would end up costing, potentially costing the city five years from now more money than, and then the taxes could possibly bring in. Uh, it's just expensive and especially with the sewer, the sewage thing has to be resolved in my, before we can do anything here. That's just where I stand. Thank you.
Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This proposed subdivision, um, it's not consistent with our comprehensive plan. Um, which is designated for low density and this is medium density. So I kind of have a problem with that.
Thank you. Um, so if anyone was here a couple of weeks ago, we, we had a little bit of back and forth on, on what to do with this and I appreciate everybody's comments and participation tonight. It was one of the key reasons why I didn't want two people at that committee meeting to make that, that call. We also got the opportunity to see that developer was able to come back with something different. And giving a developer feedback and understanding is always important. I think it's critical so that we can get a better project. Now, having said all that, I also appreciate everybody who has come out tonight and has given feedback. Um, and I am in alignment with much of what Mr. Mattney and Mr. Crayling said about sewer. If, if we know that, I don't know if we know, know. But if we firmly believe that, that Metro is going to have a problem with this from a sewer, sewer issue, then I don't see if we have a, a project here to worry about. The other thing that I did not mention a couple of weeks ago, that was another concern of mine that I didn't voice then, but I wanted to make clear so everybody understood. And Mr. Deerhog, you straightened that out for me this morning when I asked you that question, which is if we deny annexation, it, it, it's not like zoning. It's not where it's going to be denied for an entire year. They can always come back and be annexed into the city if they so choose with a different project. But I just wanted to make that known. So those are, those are my comments.
Well, I'll key in really quickly. I think there's been lots of comments already. I think it'd be prudent of us to Mr. Allgood's point to give the developers an opportunity to come back to council with a project that may fit the scope of what council would like a bit more. Um, as I look at projects like this, I don't like uh, density as much as I do. And this is something you've heard me say a number of times where I'm not necessarily as concerned about rooftops as I am value. So value of homes is important to me for um, how we structure the finances of the city. It, it, it helps while I, while I am understanding to the plight of low income housing, trying to be affordable and all those things. At the same time, from the city's perspective, it's important to maintain uh, bringing in subdivisions that to Mr. Crayling's point, don't lose the city money. So I would encourage the developers to take these comments and bring back a project that, that may fit more within the scope of what would make some sense to our city or to, to our represent, representatives here, Mr. Mayor.
I had sent David an email earlier. Log Shoals Road, let me go down the list. Log Shoals Road uh, is S23 dash 316. Did I surmise that's a state-owned road?
Correct.
Greenbrier is F48. I have no clue what that is.
It's a county road.
Uh, Pruitt Drive.
County road.
Baldwin Road.
County road.
Reason I bring that up is to be sure everybody in the audience understands South Carolina has one of the most diverse ownership of roads, I think in the nation. We have state-owned, county-owned and city-owned. This city has done a tremendous job of addressing the approximately 82 miles of city-owned streets. We do have the opportunity to speak to the state folks and the county folks about their roads. Uh, some of us speak Southern, which is very blunt with no big words. They've heard that. Their uh, future of getting around to the roads is a pretty packed schedule. Uh, the last thing I heard from the Secretary of Transportation is, don't bring me projects. I have money, but I don't have construction crews. So she's struggling to get construction headed towards projects that she already has money for. So I say that to say the roads that we have today uh, within the county and the state probably aren't on the shortlist, especially these four about any improvement. So we got what we got. Uh, I did take the opportunity today to drive all one, two, three, four. Four developments in that area. A lot of them are City of Malden already. We're already down to Baldwin Road, right across from the park there. Uh, that's called Baldwin Chase. Uh, the sign on the way in says that it has rental units available. So that's homes and townhomes. But rental units are available. Uh, I went up to uh, Pruitt Drive and uh, let me be sure I get the right one. Said, okay, I will cut through Pruitt Drive to get over to Ashmore Bridge Road. Almost had to turn my GPS on to find out how to get out of Planters Road. Uh, there's a lot of courts there and courts are dead end streets. So to say somebody's cutting through Pruitt's Road to get from Ashmore Bridge to Log Shoals. Uh, I believe they're doing that. Don't know why, but I believe they're probably doing that. But if I was coming out of these developments, I would definitely take Greenbrier Drive, except that has in excess of five-speed pumps. And also has the entrance way to Alton Chase, which is a lot of homes already in there. Uh, so go down to uh, Baldwin Road. That's the best way to go. Then you can cut over to East Standing Springs Road. I'm saying all this to get around to a point, there really is a point. I was worried about how would our public works get sanitation down to this new proposed development? Because I don't want them going down Log Shoals Road. Uh, it is a fairly narrow road. Uh, it does have schools on it and other developments that feed into that. But then I found out if you go down Baldwin Road, you're right on East Standing Springs Road, which is right down the street from Public Works. So that'd be the way to go. And they're already going there for Baldwin Chase. So it's not like dead time. So Public Works can provide their services there. Um, let me find my note of the I'm OIT guys. I do pros and cons, data points. The pros of this new proposed development is I like the diverse offering of houses there. I like what the second option came back with, with patio homes, my term, and uh, townhomes. And I like that. I like the price points because we are getting 400,000 to 650,000 homes. And there are those that uh, later in their marriage, I think the last thing I saw was like 28 years ago. Uh, they're, they need to get into starter homes. So the price points of these provide that. The fact that you could start in a townhome there and then move to a patio home in the same neighborhood is nice. It's a smaller number of houses and to me that fits the community feel that I would see. If there's passive parks and that in it, I would like to see that and know more about that. Um, so I, I like that standpoint there. I believe we would require sidewalks, internal.
Correct.
And even somewhat external.
Yes, Kurt, that's correct as well.
I have no idea where you're gonna put external sidewalks on uh, Log Shoals Road, but I'm sure you and DOT can come up with a great way to do it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll fit there. And I'll, I'll comment too, obviously this is a conceptual plan. It's not developed yet with all the detail of these types of points um, that comes later in the process as it goes through the subdivision.
Good, thank you. So those were my pros. Uh, plus it's close to our county park out there, which is a really nice park. The biggest con I have is the, I don't mean a con, I mean uh, concern is uh, the unsettled sewer question. Uh, our past history, I would love to see something in writing, certified, sanctified, homogenized, notarized. It says who's going to pick up the sewer and the responsibility if it has to be a lift station, who would do that in perpetuity? Okay? Because we know how we have to have ours paid for. And with only 50 homes in there, do the math, that gets to be a pretty high annual fee on your taxes. So that one would concern me. The uh, I'd, you know, the, the type of siding I saw on the house, I'd prefer to see something other than vinyl siding on the house. A more nicer hardy plank or something like that uh, would look good. I did go over and drive through Greenbrier Meadows. Uh, it's a nice neighborhood. Uh, it has some concerns that I would have there also. I did see the, the topology though from Greenbrier, that is, was actually down downhill. So we go uphill to get to the tree line and then we go into this new development. From that, I think that would help with the flow down toward uh, Log Shoals Road. All that said, this, I've been fairly easy to figure out if I'm far or against it. This one is a toughie. Uh, I honestly, I hear the uh, loss of trees and rural. Uh, I grew up here. So I know what rural means and I know what Log Shoals Road used to be. It ain't that way anymore. I know what Ashmore Bridge Road used to be. It's not that way anymore. It's not going back. My wife prays every day that we could get back to 1,600 homes and one red light in the city of Malden. It's just not gonna happen. Okay? So from that standpoint, I uh, Mr. Allgood, I was concerned that, and I approached that with Mr. Duncan today too, that if we denied it, could it come back with that? I'd like to see these comments given to the developer and more of our thing and keep it in the BDS. I would like to see a motion to go back to BDS committee to fleshed out and that thing. Uh, but uh, I'll have to hush it this, my three minutes are up too, I'm sure by now. Uh, Mr. Mattney.
Uh, Mayor, if uh, everybody's okay, I'd like to go ahead and move that we recommit this back to Building and Development Services Committee uh, to incorporate uh, additional comments from this council and to provide the developer an opportunity uh, to revise the plans.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, that was in the form of a motion.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second from Mr. Reynolds. Is there any discussion? Kuzner.
I just don't think that this development in that location is a good fit. Um, you know, you've got 14 acres of trees there and you've got you know, half acre, one acre. I don't know what those in Greenbrier Meadows. And then you've got homes, three and four back or two or three backyards that back up to one backyard. Uh, I don't think there's enough green space. But it's my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just piggybacking on that.
Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I won't say too much. Um, would this be something that you would be more in favor of if there were no townhomes and it was all the single-family homes detached?
Not the way it is now. If they were to put two houses in each of these townhome properties or three, I mean, I just think there's, they're just too close together.
Well, and I think some of the reason the, the neighborhood behind it is such large lots as all of those are septic, they're not fed by sewer. So one of the benefits to having a sewer line, I'm speaking just off the cuff, one of the benefits from having a sewer sign or at least an option to pump it is to be able to increase the density. So I can certainly understand the developer looking at this as a way to recoup was, was probably a tricky subdivision right beside him. Um, if, Mr. Deerhog, if we were to look at this as uh, like I said, the single-family detached with a higher density, that would be more in line with what the development is across the street, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the development across the street is called Austin Chase and it is inside the city limits.
Also has a pump station, correct?
No, it is, it is gravity-fed, uh, served by Metro. Um, but as you heard from Ms. Drake this evening, the or the mayor's term, the patio homes proposed in this con- concept right here are pretty much mirror the size of the lots in the Austin Chase project.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, not really legal advice, just to say regarding the sewer issue under our current agreement with Metro, since we do have a pending annexation request, we should be able to get an answer regarding whether or not they're going to decline to exercise their sewer rights in this area. And so we should be able to figure out that answer before the next committee meeting, which would help council in their next discussion. That's all I got.
Just to piggyback on that too, Ms. Drake commented to me as well, they're expecting to get uh, answer from Metro this week as well.
Anything else? Before us is a motion and second to um, take this back to BDS committee for additional review and uh, feedback. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion carries six to one to the committee. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
The next ordinance we have is an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the city of Malden to update this class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020.
That's also with BDS committee, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the business license standard.
At this time, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the business license standardization ordinance amendment.
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Mr. Mattany, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the business license standardization amendment, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimously. Ms. Miller?
Council is requested to consider a resolution amending the foyer policy adopted in May of twenty twenty.
From financing policy, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm looking for it in my packet. All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this was changed in May of twenty twenty. This is an update, um, requested coming from staff as a way to, um, kind of limit how much legal expenses the city is incurring by the FOIA request that the city is getting. So a number of the items that, um, our city clerk receives are items that she can handle without legal's approval. So this is just giving her the flexibility to be able to do that. Uh, we changed the policy in May of twenty twenty that required all FOIA requests to be reviewed by legal. So this is, it's also causing a bit of a lag through the FOIA system, just, um, a way to hurry the process along, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, adopt this resolution to the FOIA policy as presented in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. King, any discussion?
Mayor, would you like me to read the noted change?
Uh, it's in our packet, I think we're okay.
Very good.
Plus he wants it read.
Are, are we just trying to take money off of Mr. Hughes' table? I mean, the man has to eat, he's got a family to feed. You're trying to take money away from him.
He's pushing for retirement soon. He told me he was retiring at forty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Mattany for that.
I, I did see a letter from Mr. Dugan announcing his retirement, so I think there'll be sufficient revenue available.
Am I no, am I no longer junior partner? Now, just, just as a note for this resolution, I do agree with the proposal. It, uh, the city is getting inundated with foyer requests, uh, more and more. And there's really no need for us to review these garden variety FOIA requests. Uh, Cindy's fully capable of redacting any personal identifying information. And they know to come to us with the more difficult questions regarding foyer requests. And we're happy to obviously continue to review those from Cindy, from, uh, Mr. Duncan, as well as the department heads. I do appreciate you looking out for me.
Mr. Mattany, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, would, would you want it read into the minutes?
No, Mr. Mayor. No, Mr. Mayor, I'm good.
You're good?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Here none, the motion forces to, uh, approve the resolution amending the foyer policy that was adopted in May of twenty twenty. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, the most, the resolution is adopted.
Council is requested to discuss and select a name for the pedestrian bridge over I three eighty-five being built by the city of Malden.
Ms. Miller, this also came out of recreation as a discussion, so, uh, okay with the chair, I will open the floor for, well, you can do it, open, or as the discussion person. Mr. Allgood?
We talked about this, we don't need a formal motion for discussion.
We do not need a motion for discussion, we can have discussion, there must be a motion for an actual item coming out of it.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, fellow counsel, we, we came to, uh, at the recreation committee meeting and, uh, Ms. Lauren Carter resided and gave us, uh, some feedback in terms of how this committee came to the five names that you see in your packet. Um, the Harambe Bridge was not one of them. Um, but it certainly could be if we so choose. Um, with all, with all seriousness, uh, she came and gave a wonderful presentation to explain why they came to the names that they came to. Um, at that meeting, it was only Mr. Reynolds and myself. Uh, we gave our initial feedback, uh, with to the names Skyway, Archway, Hop, Gateway and Palmetto Pathway. Now, I just read all of those incorrectly because we all made a point that we wanted to say Malden in front of it, correct? Um, so Lauren is here, she's in the, in the room, so she can certainly provide any additional feedback that you may have or, or, or answer any questions that you may have with regards to these five that they gave us, um, as well as any additional thoughts, comments, concerns that you have over these or any of the others that were given. So with that, it's open for discussion. Mr. Mayor.
Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, I'm just gonna comment on the, uh, process by which these names were done. It was extremely thorough, thoughtful, um, and, and, and I thought an, an excellent way to, uh, bring forward as many possible names to, um, the city representatives as they could. So just to appreciate how much Lauren, as well as all those who served on the committee, um, forwarding these names to us, just an appreciation for, uh, the work that was put in to even get us to these five names, which we can debate the rest of the night, I'm sure.
My understanding that it is open, that it is not reduced just to five, that was the five that have come out of the staff's recommendation. But if this council would like to put in number six through two thousand and two, you're more than welcome to do that. I think, uh, we would probably wanna entertain a, uh, memorial to the retirement of Harambe, what is his name? What's the, the gorilla's name, the correct?
Harambe, it was Harambe, yes, sir.
Harambe, so we might want to retire him. Uh, I think, uh, PW picked up the, uh, uh, candles and, uh, memorial that was out there, so we might wanna use those in a retirement ceremony when we do pick a, a, uh, actual name for this. But anyway, just as a point of order, the any, any names you would like to suggest or modifications to, uh, this council has that pleasure before it.
I'll start.
Good.
Great, the silence. Well, I was at the committee minute, meeting, sitting in the audience, listening, and I kinda chuckled because Mr. Reynolds pretty much said he liked them all. I, I think he may have elim- eliminated one possibly. Um, and I think Mr. Allgood narrowed it down to about three. So, um, I do appreciate y'all sending it to council for us to, to discuss. I don't know how the seven of us are gonna come to consensus on a name. Um, I think I'm a little different from what the two members of committee were talking about, um, a few weeks back. And, and the name that I prefer, because actually there was only one that jumped off the page to me that kinda made sense in my opinion. And I talked to some city employees and some residents and was like, you know, what do y'all think? And, and surprisingly, I had several, um, employees that, that liked that name as well. But it refers to a Skyway, which I know sky is high and that bridge is not that high. But I just think it symbolizes what Malden is, um, you know, the sky's the limit. And it just has Malden Skyway Bridge or something with that terminology to me just has a nice little ring to it. Um, the others are okay, I just, um, I'm not in love with any of the other choices. So if somebody else has a choice six or seven, um, I'm sure we're all open to hear that. But out of these choices, I, I kinda like the ring of, of something to do with Malden Skyway.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually had one that I presented to, to Mr. Duncan, uh, and that was Il Pante Pedinale, which is Italian for the pedestrian bridge. Um, I, I don't know that, how far that carried.
Pedestrian bridge.
Il Pante Pedinale.
Can you spell it?
Pedestrian bridge, yeah, I can text it to you. I actually have a longer version, which means the pedestrian bridge that leads to the Italian village, but that's way too much of a mouthful. Um, this.
I'm impressed with the language, yeah.
Thanks to Google Translate. Um, you know, we, this, this is something that we really, we're gonna get to name it once. Um, or apparently twice since Harambe is now, but taken off. Um, but once it goes, it goes. And we need to understand that, um, no matter what we name it, it will find a life of its own in terms of what local people call it. Um, you know, when you look at the arena downtown, um, some people call it the well, some people still call it the BiLo Center. Some people say that Bon Secours Wellness Arena is just French for BiLo Center. And, you know, it, it will take on a life of its own, so we need to understand that the longer we make the name, the more truncated it's gonna get. So when we throw Malden in front of something, we already know it's in Malden, everybody knows it's in front of Malden. When we throw something after it, it may stick, it may not. It's gonna be whatever is in that middle piece, that Skyway that you talk about, um, that people are gonna pay attention to. There was another one that made the list, uh, Mavenu, and I talked with, with Mr. Duncan about that, you know, the tide of the high school. We're not in a rush where we have to do this now. Bridgeway isn't fully online yet. You know, they've had some, some of their tenants open, um, but there are other tenants that are still on the way. There, um, are tenants that will come in phase two. Um, so I, I don't know that we are in a rush to do this. Um, and, and that's really kinda where I am right now. Let's, let's, let's see how this continues to evolve, what it continues to look like, how our residents continue feeling about it, um, before we go ahead and make that solid name. I mean, if we had to do it right now, I probably would lean, uh, more with, with Ms. King and, and Skyway. But I just don't know that we've got a name anything right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Randy. Just a food for thought, would we want to do the final five or six? I know there's subject for you if we call them finalists, but, uh, do put it out there and open up the survey for our citizens to put it back and see if Skyway, Archway, Malden Hop, the Gateway Bridge comes back with a resounding, we don't wanna, okay, just throwing it out there. You know, uh.
Reggie McBridgeface it is.
Ms. King?
The reason I said that is because we had a process and I think we've gone through that process to, so to reiterate and do it again, I think would be counterproductive. But that's just my thought. But good, I, I mean, I understand where you're coming from.
Just keep doing it and we get it right, which means it's my choice. I'm kidding, kidding, strike that from the minutes. Uh, you know, I, as, I've had multiple discussions with Lauren about this and we've gone over the, what I call the four that, and we looked at kinda thing. And, uh, did a little bit of different on that. The Malden Gateway Bridge, the reason I say Malden in that, uh, Mr. Mattany, is, um, I'm constantly working with the press that Bridgeway is in Malden. It has a Simpsonville address, has Simpsonville zip code, but it's in Malden. And I hear all about the Bridgeway Bridge that the Hughes investment built. Yes, they did build it. Malden paid for it, you guys paid for it, we voted to pay for it. So I'd like to see the word Malden on it. Uh, it could be in multiple letters, okay, uh, colors. But, uh, you know, and playing with that one, the Malden Hop, for some reason, I didn't like it to begin with. But the more, uh, we kinda had a little lighthearted banner in the hallway about the Malden Hop. And it might be called IHOP, I don't care what they call it, as long as they call it Malden Hop. So I, I kinda had headed toward that one. First choice was the Malden Gateway Bridge. I didn't think it was an arch, so I didn't, uh, jump on that one right away. It's not high up in the sky, but none of them really upset me one way or the other. I just, I kept coming back, I don't know, for some reason, I liked a little catchy Malden Hop. I think I put a third word in there, but I can't remember what it was. Lauren, do you remember what I said, Malden something Hop? It was something to do with the fact that Malden developed the pathway over an interstate that opened it up to the Golden Strip. You know, Mountain Inn in Simpsonville, they can go anywhere else they wanna go, but they gotta cross an interstate. We've done it for them and I wanted something in it for that. I can't remember what it was, but it was something like that. But, uh, anyway, that's, the Malden Hop kinda kept jumping back at me that, yes, they are gonna shorten it. I still call the one downtown the BiLo Center and sometimes even Memorial Auditorium. But, uh, that's how far back I go, so anyway.
It's Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at first I liked the Malden Gateway Bridge because Skyway to me, I don't know, it just seemed like it was way up or, you know, I don't know. Um, Archway, I didn't feel like it was like an arch. Um, I do kinda like the hop, only because it kinda gives you the sense of it is a pedestrian bridge. Instead of maybe something that you would, if you think of a bridge, you think maybe it's a driving bridge or kinda like, um. Anyway, so that, those are, those are my two.
Mr. Allgood?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when, when we had their, our committee meetings, uh, ju- just for, for reference to anyone who wasn't there, um, with the ones that were, that were given, I, I mentioned that the Gateway seems the, to be the, the best of the options with Hop probably being the second. And, and let me explain again why Hop, I kept saying Hopper, Hopper Bridge. Um, if we are tying it to what we now know as the, um, uh, Swamp Rabbit Trail, it works with that, not so much that it's a historic overpass project. That doesn't have a nice ring to it. Well, if we're linking it to Swamp Rabbit, I think it becomes something better. Um, Gateway is the easiest on the ears for me versus Skyway, as we pointed out, it's not in the sky, it doesn't have arches. And Palmetto is, is kind of safe to me. But what I will say is going back to the idea of if this was tied to the Swamp Rabbit Trail and we use the word hop, I think what Mr. Mattany said about Mavenu is similar. And, and the way it's similar is because we're now linking it to an entity that is in Malden, which is the high school. That's, I think, if we were to say, anything that we're struggling with this is because that none of the names actually say Malden, goes back to, it doesn't say Malden. We can put Malden in front of it, but none of the names that we have say Malden. Now, if we say Mavenu or we draw some other conclusion, where we bring in something that is here locally, then it becomes something that has a little bit more meaning, which is why I think we're also gravitating toward Hop. That's, that's my thought. Thank you, sir. Well, well, as I pointed out, we saw the entire list and my daughter's list of the Kennedy Bridge was on the list. Cause I know she gave that, that's a reference to the Barbie movie, in case you didn't get a chance to see.
You know, I, I guess the day that I'm riding a bicycle and I'm coming on Highway fourteen from Simpsonville, then Taff looks at me and says, where you wanna go next? I said, let's grab the Malden Hop. Taff says, why? I would hope Malden would stick in front of the Hop, Malden Hop, grab the Malden Hop.
We can hop, uh, hop over the, um, three eighty-five over to Bridgeway.
Yeah.
And now, now I'm, I'm seeing a video, okay? Instead of um-bop, it's um-hop. And we take it off the old group at the Hampson.
Life to say.
And with that, I killed the conversation.
I, I was looking to see if it was after nine, we're beginning to get a little punchy.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment. So I think there's been a lot of great discussion, you know, I've been keeping an unofficial tally over here and there seems to be a lot of interest in Malden Hop. And in Malden Gateway Bridge. And so it, I feel like the discussion is kind of gravitated toward a point of, of two particular names. With a trailing Skyway Bridge in there as well, but. To Mr. Matney's point, uh, there could be continued discussion, there could be a decision point, or there could be just take some time to think a little bit longer. And maybe focusing on those last two potentially and see what really strikes your fancy when we come back again.
So. We entertain a motion to. Put this back to Recreation Committee with the feedback we just had?
It honestly could stay here unless there's something. You want the Recreation Committee to consider, um, but that's, that's up to council.
Okay, it's, it's listed as an action item, so we'll need a motion of.
Mayor, I move we hold this on the floor to the next meeting.
I have a motion from Mr. Matney to hold this on the floor, which means it must be on next month's agenda. There are second.
Second.
Second, Ms. King, is there any discussion? Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we're gonna hold him on the floor, I wouldn't suggest, let's do pick the top three and give where we're not still thinking about. Almetto Pathway or Archway, whatever one I would, I would suggest, and it sounds like to your point, there's probably a top three. To refine our discussions on those. Or at least from this list, certainly. To Ms. King's point, I was noncommittal on everything.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any more discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of the motion to hold it on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here and none, that's most to hold this item for next month's agenda. Back to public comment. There is. No one signed up for the second public comment. And uh, you'll notice we moved that up because the next item for us is to consider an executive session. So I didn't want any public comments sitting here. Is anyone online? I forget, okay, no one online. So that next item on the agenda is an executive session to consider to contractual matter. Relating to the park group is allowed by state statute thirty dash four, day seventy, A one, and I stole Ms. Miller's thunder probably by reading that. Well, just a pleasure of council.
So moved.
Yep, a motion, Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Crayton, is there any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of the executive session to consider contractual matter relating to the park group is allowed by state statute thirty dash four, dash seventy, A one, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here and none, we will adjourn to executive set, not adjourn, we will move the exec session at approximately eight fifty-two.
Alright, Council has returned to chambers from our executive session. Mr. Matt, would you like to report out?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at ten thirteen, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, sir. Possible action or not have discussed? Any action? There are none, council's concerns. There are none while they're here on German.
It's a move.
I have stereo with Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Matney. One of them will be the primary, one will be the secretary, let's see if he decides that. All those in favor of German say aye.
Aye.
Those who both like sign, here none, we are adjourned at eight, ten fifteen.